Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order a meeting of Haverty Grace Mayor and City Council. The date is Monday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The time is now seven P. M. I will call the roll of the council members. Council President Glenn.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
Councilmembers Zinner.
Here.
Councilmember Boyer.
Here.
Councilmember Ringsacker.
Here.
And Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Of all council members present and accounted for, I'd like to ask everybody to join me for a pledge of allegiance and opening prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If I could kindly ask everyone to please remain standing as I call forward. Pastor Lynn Humphries-Russ of Susquehanna Charge of the United Methodist Church. Pastor, thank you for joining us again. It's a pleasure to see you in the chambers. Thank you.
It is a pleasure to be here. Thank you. Would you please bow your heads and pray with me? Oh, God, here we are again. We're calling to you as we always need to do. Tonight, we're here to ask for your guidance, your grace, your courage, and your strength for the governing of our city. These council members need your inspiration as they work on the weighty matters before them. Help them to know you as they struggle in the midst of the challenges that today brings. We're here tonight as we reopen our life from the tragedy of this virus, from social upheaval, economic crises, and the many daily obstacles that our citizens find that prevent them from that pursuit of happiness enshrined in our Declaration of Independence. On the eve of Saint Patrick's Day, as cold winter begins to sprout into the delights of spring, help these men and women of the Haverty Grace City Council to acknowledge the joys within the differences present in our community so that everyone will blossom fully. Help them to look beyond the problems to find solutions. May their unity with you be reflected in their unity together. Oh, God, we see you in so many ways, seek you through so many differing paths, and call out to you using so many different names. Tonight, I pray to you in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Pastor Lynn, again, thank you for your words. I loved what you had to say. And it's always a pleasure to have you here. Don't be a stranger, and we hope to see you soon, okay?
Be a blessing.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringsacker.
Mr. Mayor, council, I'd like to, if I may, make an amendment to tonight's agenda and remove item thirteen A, ordinance ten forty-nine concerning amendments of city zoning code two oh five dash nine for second reading. We've decided to send this back to the planning commission for further review and hope to have it on the next agenda.
Council, I have a request by Councilmember Ringsacker to remove item thirteen A from the agenda. Are there any objections to put this to a vote, or is this a friendly amendment?
Friendly.
Friendly? Okay. Councilmember Ringsacker, thirteen A will be removed by consent of the council.
Thank you so much. And that discussion with the planning commission will be handled on next Monday on the twenty-second. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, council president?
We're good.
We're good? Okay. Okay, we're going to go to item five, approval of the minutes from the city council meeting of March first, two thousand and twenty-one. Council to have a motion to approve. Motion by Councilmember Zinner.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Boyer. Questions or comments on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Council meeting minutes of March first, two thousand and twenty-one carry six zero in the affirmative. Thank you, council. Item number six, comments from citizens on agenda items. This is the moment of the meeting that if you wish to speak on an item that's on the agenda, this is the time to raise your hand and be recognized. If you're here because you wish to speak on city business other than what's on the agenda, there is a part on the agenda at the very end of tonight's meeting where you can speak on other city matters. So if you wish to speak on an agenda item, please raise your hand and be recognized. Sir. Good evening, sir. Welcome to the city council meeting. May we please have your name and address for the record.
Alan Fair, Three Concord Place, Haverty Grace.
Welcome.
Thank you. What I would like to talk about is the annual decoy Wildlife Parts Festival, May first. We didn't have one last year because of the COVID. We were going to schedule one this year, but then it was to be at the new school, and that's not going to happen. So what we want to do is have tailgate, basically to show a smaller scale, probably fifty to sixty dealers. We just felt that if we didn't do something over a two-year period, it would be just detrimental because this, you know, would have been about our, I think, fifty ninth, thirty nine, thirty ninth show. So that's what we want to do. There'll be tailgating the front, the side wherever we can, and I think Patrick's probably been involved as far as laying it out. And then...
Yes, right, Joe.
You have that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
I'll be presenting that this evening.
Yeah, okay. So I just want to let you know how important it is to us. They're having a meeting tonight, and it's just that we just feel that we need to do something. We'll have the dinner the night before, and so we're just going to do the best we can with what we've got to work with. We'll probably, as we have under, with other functions, we've used the Bayou property with their permission, and of course, we have to have insurance and everything, which we've always done, and that's a possibility. We would go over there. So I hope the city will go along with this and certainly... Reason I'm getting up right now because I've got to go show a house at eight o'clock, so I don't know whether you'll be done by then.
Well, you picked the right, you picked the right time to speak, no problem.
Okay, it's been one of those days. All right, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fair.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting. May we please have your name and address for the record.
Suzanne Chadwick at nine three seven Nina Avenue in Haverty Grace.
Welcome.
And as a board member of the Haverty Grace Arts Collective, I was one, I was once again asked to mount the Haverty Grace Jazz and Blues Fest, which we had anticipated having last year, but unfortunately, we had a pandemic. So with that current pandemic, I have moved forward in planning a two-day rather than three-day event that is mostly outdoors. We will have COVID precautions, but I wanted to make sure to correct one little item on fifteen D five, just that the Pennington stage, which will host forty-five to fifty-minute free concerts under tent, will run, the concerts will run five thirty to seven thirty rather than seven P. M. as it stated here. All the other timings are good. So we have a free stage, free local stage, right in the heart of downtown. Concord Point Light, Concord Point Light Park will have a big outdoor stage that the Regatta uses and help keep everyone safe and comfortable, and the State Theater is also going to collaborate, so we have twelve concerts that we'd like to present, and I will be here. I will stay here in case you have questions, but I wanted to make sure I at least presented that little bit.
Where is that located? Where are you? Where is it written wrong? Is it here or here?
What is, well, what?
What are you talking about? What's wrong?
Oh, on here, it says five thirty to seven for the Pennington rather than five thirty to seven thirty. Sorry, I was not clear. We have two concerts planned. Ronnie Smith is a Hartford County resident whose daughter goes to Hartford Tech, and he's a signed guitarist, signed jazz artist. And then the U. B. Blake Museum is planning to bring us a young artist of jazz nature, although I don't know who the artist is yet. So I'll be here in case anyone has any questions, or if you have them now.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Chadwick?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does any other individual in the audience wish to speak on an agenda item? Any comments from the council?
Good.
Okay.
Mayor, I have one comment to read into the record that I received online.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Seibert. Please proceed to read that into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. This is from the Lower Susquehanna Heritage Greenway. To the honorable Mayor Martin and members of city council, it's the Pride of Baltimore Two Event Application. Dear Mayor Martin, Council President Glenn, and members of city council, the Lower Susquehanna Heritage Greenway, LSHG, is pleased to support America's Star Spangled Ambassador Pride of Baltimore Twos' May seventh through ninth visit to our heritage area. You may recall from previous council email updates that this is a project the LSHG Pride Two and National Park Services has been working on since early two thousand and twenty, planning for the two thousand and twenty Waterfront Festival and LSHG's twentieth anniversary celebration event. Fortunately, our funding support efforts were successful, but the pandemic prevented the two thousand and twenty visit. Now we're back on track to have this replica war of eighteen twelve privateer schooner grace our shores. In addition to the ship's presence, the Pride Two and National Park Service Star Spangled Banner National Historic Trail plan to provide virtual programming and shoreline displays, encouraging visitors to explore the history of the War of eighteen twelve in the Chesapeake Bay and highlighting the nationally significant connection to the community. This floating museum presents a unique opportunity for educational engagement and enjoyment, especially during these times of limited travel, so we hope you will support this event. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Bridget Cardy, Executive Director.
Mr. Seibert, thank you very much for reading that into the record. Okay, we're going to go to item seven, appointments. This evening, we have three reappointments to city commissions. We have one to the Economic Development Advisory Board, one to the Historic Preservation Commission, and one to the Planning Commission. So we're going to start with the Economic Development Advisory Board for the reappointment of Ms. Maria Terry, and the liaison is Councilmember Robertson. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move to submit Ms. Maria Terry's name for reappointment to the Economic Development Advisory Board.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Robertson, seconded by Councilmember Martin. This is for the reappointment of Ms. Maria Terry to the Economic Development Advisory Board. Are there questions or comments among the council before the vote? Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, you know, want to say a little bit about it. All the folks that serve on EDAB, the Economic Development Advisory Board, are phenomenal people, phenomenal volunteers, phenomenal business people in their respective industries and trades, and, you know, Ms. Terry is no exception. She's always there on time and, you know, hardly misses a meeting. She's very active and involved in the committees and subcommittees that we have, so I really appreciate her willingness to keep serving, and I hope that the rest of the council will join me.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Any other further questions or comments from council? Okay, this is for the reappointment of Ms. Maria Terry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Ms. Maria Terry is reappointed to the Economic Development Advisory Board by a vote of six zero in the affirmative. Thank you very much, council. We're going to go to item B, Historic Preservation Reappointment, and our Historic Preservation liaison is Councilmember Zinner. Good evening. Thank you very much, Councilmember Zinner. Council have a motion by Councilmember Zinner to have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Robertson. This is for the reappointment of Ms. Carol Nemeth, Historic Preservation Commission. Question or comments? Councilmembers Zinner.
I want to take a moment to just thank Ms. Carol Nemeth for, again, putting herself forward to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission. For at least the past twenty-five years, Carol has been welcoming people, locals, and people from out of town to her iconic historic home and bed and breakfast, and it really stands out on Union Avenue as a real prize. She also serves with grace and common sense and enthusiasm on the Historic Preservation Commission, and I couldn't be happier that she has decided to serve another term.
Thank you for your comments, Councilmembers Zinner. Any further comments from the council? From the council? That's okay. Okay. For the vote on Ms. Carol Nemeth, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. Repointment of Ms. Carol Nemeth is approved, six zero in the affirmative. Item number C, Planning Commission Reappointment, Mr. Harry Miller, and I'll hand it off to the Planning Commission liaison, Mr. Ringsacker. Councilmember Ringsacker.
Mr. Mayor, council, I would like to make the motion to reappoint Mr. Harry Miller to the Planning Commission.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Ringsacker, seconded by Councilmember Martin. Questions or comments on the reappointment? Councilmember Ringsacker.
I got to tell you, Harry is such a great guy. Very smart, very knowledgeable about the building codes in the state. He's currently the project manager for our new high school. So he works for Hartford County Public Schools. He is currently the vice chair of the Planning Commission, and his knowledge base is very useful on the commission, so I do pray that he gets reappointed.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Councilmember Ringsacker. Any further questions or comments? For the reappointment of Mr. Harry Miller to the Planning Commission, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Repointment of Mr. Harry Miller is approved by council, six zero in the affirmative. Thank you very much, council, for all three reappointments. They are all excellent people who've served on the commission very well, and these are, and I appreciate your support. We're going to go down to item eight, oath of office. Although our first, although all three reappointments were just that, reappointments, we don't have to swear anybody in. We did appoint a gentleman, Mr. James Clark, to the Water and Sewer Commission back in January, and we were unable at the time because of COVID restrictions here in the chamber to swear Mr. Clark in. So we are fortunate to have him in the audience this evening, and if I could be humble enough to call you forward and your wife, and please, if you wish, all come forward, and we'll take the oath. You want to ask Dave? Dave, if you want. Come up if you want. It's okay. Actually, I appreciate it, and... Dave? Actually, if you don't mind, if you can kind of hold the microphone kind of nearest. That'd be perfect.
I don't hold it close enough, otherwise it...
Won't hear anything?
It's, it's not.
Okay.
Hold it like a fire.
Oh, well. Okay, Mr. Clark, thank you so much. I want to ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'm going to say the word aye. When I say the word aye, please repeat the word aye, but then say your name. Aye?
Aye, James David Clark.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill...
That I will fulfill...
The requirement...
The requirement...
Of the office I'm about to assume.
Of the office I'm about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll be faithful in their true allegiance...
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance...
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution...
And support the Constitution...
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
That I'll faithfully and partially...
Thou'faithfully and parthfully...
Without fear of favor or prejudice...
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
As a member of the Water and Sewer Commission.
As a member of the Water and Sewers Commission.
Best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Mr. Clark, did you bring your whistle? Where's the whistle at?
Thank you, official.
Sign this right here. And you also like to present city... Thank you for your city as well. Thank you for your right hand. This is my county claim, also sealed on it. Thank you again for serving.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. We will move on to item number nine this evening, which is recognitions. And this evening, we have no recognitions. Number ten, proclamations, we have nothing to proclaim. And item eleven, presentations. Boy, do we have a presentation for everybody tonight. That's all I got to say. So the bar is set so high. I'm kidding, I'm joking, Dr. Robertson. No, anyway, this is a excellent friend of mine, PhD in the field of history, just a overall tremendous, great person here in the city of Haverty Grace, and I'd like to introduce everybody to Dr. Amy Rosenkranz, who's going to be talking to us this evening about Haverty Grace's role in the women's suffrage movement and an assembly that took place in nineteen fifteen that was very important in the Nineteenth Amendment passage. So, Dr. Rosenkranz, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Good evening, everyone. I am so excited to be here tonight to talk to you about women's suffrage, and we're going to be talking just a little bit. I promise it won't be too long, but the history of Haverty Grace is important to all of us, and growing up in Haverty Grace, we've always learned about the War of eighteen twelve. We learned about how Haverty Grace was almost the capital of the United States. We learn all of those things, but we never heard about the women who participated in the women's suffrage movement. So a year and a half ago, I had the opportunity to start working with the Maryland Women's Heritage Center, and their goal over the past year was to identify the women in Maryland who worked, who fought for the right to vote, and they were doing biographies of all sorts of Maryland women. And when I went to a conference, I went to a lecture and talked to them, and I said, "Well, where are the Hartford County women?" And they said, "We don't know any. We don't have anybody who's doing any research. We don't know if anybody did. Well, we know they did, but we don't know who they are." And I said, "Well, I'm here, and I'll do the research." So for the past year and a half, I have been researching Hartford County women, but of course, with a focus on Haverty Grace women. So I talked to you a little bit about the Haverty Grace women and then what we're doing this month to celebrate them. The very first instance of Haverty Grace women participating in the suffrage movement that we know of so far occurred in nineteen eleven with this group of women that you see here on the slide. This was a group of young ladies who lived in the Ontario Atsigo Street area who decided to form a literacy society, and they called themselves the Haverty Grace, or sorry, HDG Suff's. There are a number of articles in the newspaper about them participating. It was a true literacy society, but obviously, it had a focus on voting. You will notice some of these, there's several names there, and there's two pictures, and one of my focuses in looking at these women is to find out who they were and to find out their pictures, and I've had a really incredible opportunity to be researching women such as these on here and finding that many of their descendants are still living in Haverty Grace in the Hartford County area. So as we go through, you're going to recognize some names, you're going to recognize some faces, and hopefully, you'll join me by the end of the month in celebrating who they are. So by nineteen eleven, we have these Haverty Grace Suff's group meeting in Haverty Grace, having evening events at their houses, talking in the newspaper about being out late till eleven o'clock at night because they're having such a good time, doing what they're doing and talking about suffrage. But by nineteen twelve, we have in Hartford County an entire suffrage organization that even though it's focused and formed of women that are mostly in the Forest Hill, Foston, Bel Air area, they are servicing the entire county, and it's their goal to recruit as many men and especially women who want to get the right to vote for women. So these women, and this woman pictured here is going to be especially important to us this month, Ms. Theodore W. Forbes, or Elizabeth, as I like to call her, she went all around the county trying to get women the right to vote, and their goal was to recruit as many people as possible, and they went to every nook and cranny in Hartford County, and they really liked to come to Haverty Grace. There were a number of different events at the Opera House, but this event is especially interesting, I believe, because the keynote speaker that evening was a woman by the name of Catherine Houghton Hepburn. That name may sound familiar. This is not the Catherine Houghton Hepburn, but this is the mother of Catherine Hepburn that came here to Haverty Grace to advocate for women's suffrage. So that's just one of the famous people that came here to Haverty Grace. We see lots of different events, and we know that by nineteen twelve, again, the racetrack is a really big deal, and we know all about the history of the racetrack, but we didn't know until recently that women's suffrage workers were at the racetrack passing out leaflets and trying to obtain people who were ready to support women voters. By nineteen thirteen, Haverty Grace is on the national stage for suffrage, and that was because there is a group of women from New York called the Army of the Hudson, and they decided they were going to march from New York City to Washington, D. C., in order to be a part of the inaugural festivities for Woodrow Wilson. They marched in march all the way from New York City to Washington, D. C., and as we like to say, Haverty, you can't go anywhere on the East Coast unless you stop in Haverty Grace first, right? So these women stop in Haverty Grace, and actually, they talk about the fact that Haverty Grace is probably the best place that they stop on their trip, the first place that is the most hospitable. So hospitable that we have a group called the Wilson Social Club, so-called because they socialized at the Wilson Pool Hall, who walked across the Susquehanna River Bridge, led by Mrs. Grace Thompson, the bugler, who marched them across the bridge into Haverty Grace to stop here for the night in Haverty Grace. Mrs. Grace Thompson is pictured there. Her descendants are here in Hartford County, and they meet with the mayor at the time. This is not your favorite quote, Mayor Martin, but this might be your second favorite quote once you see it. Mayor Weber, who was mayor at the time, he says he's a halfway suffragette. He's not ready to support everything, all the votes for women, but some of them, but despite the fact that he's not a full suffragette... he does provide a warm welcome for the, sorry, for the marchers. The marchers stay at the Harford House Hotel, which may look familiar to some of us. And they talk about the fact that the accommodations were fair and the home cooking was really, really good. And from that time on, Havity Grace becomes this stopping point for people coming in and through on the suffrage movement and becomes a really, really kind of hotbed of what's going on in the suffrage movement. So much so, that by 1915, when the Maryland Just Government League decides to have an event, they choose Havity Grace to be one of the stops. Now, the March of the Hudson was a really big deal. It was covered in all the newspapers. And it was really interesting to a lot of people because these women, women, in 1912, 1913, sorry, were marching. They refused to get in cars, and they were marching. So, it was a big spectacle. Well, the Maryland Just Government League decided to have a different type of spectacle, and they built a prairie schooner. And we all remember the Oregon Trail prairie schooners, right, moving out west? So, these ladies built the schooner. They covered it with Just Government League posters and banners and flags and Votes for Women flag. And they decided that Harford County would be the perfect place to try out this kind of idea of camping, and they did camp in some cases, around a region to get votes for women. And again, just like you can't get anywhere from the south to the north without going through Havity Grace, you can't go anywhere in Harford County without coming here either. So, they stop here in Havity Grace. You can see there, there's Ms. Forbes. Ms. Forbes is there again because she's in charge of the prairie schooner. She's the one that worked with all the local women in Harford County, including a few here in Havity Grace, who made all the arrangements, made all of the entertainment. Where are they gonna stop? Who are they gonna greet? They stop here in Havity Grace on the Fourth of July weekend. Now, if we think the Fourth of July is a big deal now, you read the newspaper events of the Fourth of July in Havity Grace in 1915, it was huge. So huge that they built this new kind of grandstand gazebo thing. And the mayor at the time, another interesting mayor by the name of Fahy, he is not quite a believer in suffrage, but he does allow the women to use this newly-built gazebo grandstand for their rally. And they do. And the Just Government League women, the suffragists, gain a lot of new members there. And they are able to get a little money as well for the cause. And this is the event that becomes such an important deal when we're looking at the history of Havity Grace because it's a huge focus in what we'll be talking about in a minute. But I want to tell you a couple more things. Havity Grace continues to be the center point of a lot of suffrage activity, including finally, in December of 1919, at the Willow Theater, which is right next door to the State Theater. The Harford County Just Government League has a big meeting. And it's at this meeting that they pass a resolution asking the Harford County legislators in the Maryland General Assembly to vote for the Susan B. Anthony Amendment. Unfortunately, our Harford County legislators did not listen to them, nor did most of the Maryland General Assembly because the Maryland General Assembly refused to pass or refuse to ratify the Susan B. Anthony Amendment. But there were 36 states that did. So, by August 18th of 1920, women's suffrage has been won. And women's suffrage is the law of the land. But there are still people across the country in Maryland and in Havity Grace who aren't too happy about that, including a gentleman by the name of Mr. Fahy. Mr. Fahy is no longer the mayor, but he's running again to be the mayor in 1921. And the women who have obtained the vote are now saying, "We have the vote because we want to clean up government. We don't like the political bosses that are running things." And Mr. Fahy was seen as a political boss. He was seen as in the pocket of the racetrack. He was seen as in the pocket of every gambler, every liquor establishment, et cetera. And he was seen as a boss. In the Evening Sun, he's asked about that. And he says that women, you know, women, they just have, they're basically say they have their eyes on heaven and they think they can fix everything. But women really need a boss. This does not engender him, pun intended, to any of the women, or many of the women in Havity Grace who have started registering to vote. 250 new voters register to vote for the first election that women are allowed to vote in, including Ms. Lyon. You may recognize that name. And they go to the polls because there's a Merrill election in 1921 in May. And that is between Mr. Fahy and Mr. Vessi. And guess what? The election comes down to 20 votes. Mr. Vessi wins. Mr. Fahy does not take this sitting down. He accuses, or he blames his loss on women voters. And he and his advisors decide to go to court. They go to court and say that the Havity Grace Charter says that only male citizens can vote. And those 200 and some women who voted illegally voted, and then the election was illegal. So, his loss wasn't really a loss. Sounds familiar. So, as we're talking, we see he goes to court. Goes to the Circuit Court where the judge says, "Uh, wait a minute." And Mr. Martin, I know you teach this in your eighth grade social studies class. There's this thing called the supremacy clause. And in the Constitution, it says that the Constitution is supreme over state and local governments. And so, Havity Grace women were jubilant at the fact that the election was upheld. Mr. Fahy went off into the sunset, and Mr. Vessi was the mayor. But Havity Grace women were jubilant. They were victorious. And we continue to be jubilant and victorious to this day. And that's what we're celebrating this month in Havity Grace. We were lucky enough to work with the Maryland Women's Heritage Center and the Pomeroy Foundation to be able to document enough suffrage activity in Havity Grace to warrant a historic marker. So, on the last Saturday of this month, March 27th, we will be dedicating a marker in Tidings Park at the exact place where the 1915 suffrage rally took place. And the women of Havity Grace have rallied again, and the arts people, the arts collective. And not only are we having a marker dedication, we're having a full week of activities. And the flyer is out, and we'll make sure you have all of the information. We are having living history portrayals. We are having a lecture with two of our lovely Havity Grace council people. We are having a movie of Iron-Jawed Angels. And most importantly, or I think most fun, we are gonna be having a suffrage march. So, gather your white, your bowler hats, Patrick. And at 11:45, we're gonna be gathering at the Opera House in full suffrage attire and marching from the Opera House to Tidings Park where we'll be ready for the marker celebration. So, I hope that everyone will join us. And I'm also putting a plea out there because we're still looking for the people who participated in the movement. We know that there are more women. Like I said, I just found one picture today. We are identifying descendants all over the place. And if anyone out there knows of any of the women I've mentioned or any other women that may have participated in the suffrage movement, we'd love to hear their stories so that we can document them too. So, thank you. And I want to thank your staff, Mayor Martin. They have been fabulous in helping establish this event. And council members, you should have a little gift at your seat. We have medallions made by the incomparable Big House signs that will be celebrating the event at the end of the month. And they will be available for purchase at some point, too. So, thank you.
Dr. Rosenkranz, thank you. That was a great presentation. But more importantly, it's an educational presentation because very few people knew about that. I mean, I'll never forget when you came to my office over a year ago, and you met with myself and Patrick and the chief staff, Steve Gampror, we had no idea. And one of the things that we take so much pride in Havity Grace, we always feel Havity Grace is this great melting pot of a city. And what makes us different is we just feel, we have that sense of acceptance with people. You know, we're different. And I think it's the history of our city. It's perhaps that it was a port city in the 1800s. It's just more of a blend of different, you know, people with diversity. We've always been convinced Havity Grace played a role in the Underground Railroad and things like that. But we just weren't sure what our role was in the women's suffrage movement. And we just kind of figured, well, you know, Havity Grace participated in a lot of things, but maybe not that. And when you came with this information, it was just awesome. I mean, we got so excited. And, you know, especially the story you said about the election of 1921. You know, these are just names on a wall now, but people don't remember, or if they even knew just what was at stake and that the election was contested. And right away, the supremacy clause was enforced, that the amendment did carry, and that amendment, the ink wasn't even dry on it. And so, like I said, Havity Grace not only supported it, but Havity Grace tested it at the same time. And which gives me so much pride to be Havity Grace citizen that, yes, we're so awesome in so many ways, and we had something to do with that. And so, with open arms, we accept this knowledge you brought to us. The plaque that was made, I would like for you to help me unveil in a second. And I really hope everybody can join us on March 27th at 1 o'clock down at Tidings Park for the dedication of this Pomeroy Foundation marker. Now, the Pomeroy Foundation does all the historic markers you see throughout the city, throughout Harford County. The Lafayette marker that was dedicated in November was a Pomeroy Foundation. So, that's a pretty big deal. When a Pomeroy Foundation says you're hip enough to get a marker, then that's a real deal. I mean, when they pay that, it's a heavy cast iron marker, and sometimes they all have their own flair to it. This one, as you'll see, the color coordination, of course, it's for Women's Suffrage, white and pink. But, and again, the entire itinerary of the events at the Opera House, the Iron-Jawed Angel movie, the march down to Tidings Park, all that stuff is gonna be in a part of a press release that the city's gonna release. Also, Adam, that's gonna be on the city website, city's social media outlets. So, if you're watching this and you're wondering, "How can I get involved? How can I be part of this?" The city's putting out a press release starting tomorrow on March 16th. And so, we'll bombard you with information. I'm sure it'll be in newspapers, it's gonna be on social media outlets. But again, Dr. Rosenkranz, this information would have been lost to the ages had it not been for your diligence. And that's really what, that's really what being historians are about, is saving it for people to one day reflect. And I think you just gave this whole city a ginormous amount of information to reflect upon and to make us proud for our role in history. So, council, can I ask everyone to, I mean, we'll have a, say something in a minute. But can I ask everybody to join me while we present this Pomeroy marker? Can you join me down in the wall? I'll make sure every council member has a chance to say something. Okay, what we're gonna do here. Dr. Rosenkranz, I'm gonna hand you this microphone in a second. So, when we unveil it, you can read it for the first time to the public. Casey, would you like to help me unveil this? And Carolyn?
So, ladies and gentlemen, this is our Pomeroy Foundation marker, and would you like to give the honor of unveiling? Dr. Rosenkranz is gonna read this officially. Dr. Rosenkranz will read this officially.
Road to the 19th Amendment, Votes for Women. Elizabeth Forbes, Harford County Suffragist, organized Prairie Schooner Women's Suffrage Campaign stopped here in Havity Grace in 1915. William G. Pomeroy Foundation, 2020.
Council, any comments? Council members, enter. Microphone?
Elizabeth Forbes had a nickname, and it was Jailbird. She was one of the only suffragists that was arrested for her efforts. So, I just thought I'd add that.
Thank you. Council members, enter. Any other comments from council members? Councilman Robertson?
Mr. Mayor, you know, I remember when this was first discussed several months ago. It was brought up that we were getting a plaque. You know, and I heard a little bit about the story, but I really appreciate Dr. Amy doing the presentation for us here. You're right, that was a very good presentation. I probably could have listened to it for another 15, 20 minutes, you know, without blinking an eye. But it's fascinating. It's absolutely fascinating that Havity Grace was such an integral part of, you know, a huge event in history. And, you know, I never knew until a few months ago, and now I understand a little bit more, and that's really cool. It's just one more feather in the cap of being happy to be here and live in this town. So, yeah, thank you for everybody that did the research on that. And, you know, is doing the research on it, and I look forward to learning more.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Any other comments from council? Council President Glenn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Dr. Rosenkranz said it all, and it just goes to show her attention to detail truly, truly speaks for itself. And it really generated history that would otherwise go unnoticed. As a kid growing up, I got to know the Rosenkranz family because her dad was a very dedicated volunteer with the Susquehanna Hose Company. And I got to know, and the ambulance corps too, and I got to know the Rosenkranz family. And Dr. Rosenkranz, your dad, be proud.
Thank you, Council President. Any further questions or comments? Okay, excellent. That was a very good presentation. And I hope people have a chance to participate in the events following up to March 27th's dedication. So, couldn't be any more proud or happier. Okay, item 12. We're gonna move on to item 12 now. And item 12 is a resolution. Calendar resolution concerning license agreement for sign at 669 Revolution Street. And we're gonna refer this to the Chair of the Planning Committee, Councilmember Ringstager.
I'm actually the ex-officio member of the Planning Committee. I am not the Chair. Mr. Volney-Forrester.
Chair of the Planning Committee, not the...
Committee, I am.
Committee, you are. That's why I said committee.
Okay.
You're the liaison to the commission.
Liaison...
Don't mess with me, Jimmy.
All right. We're gonna take it out back. Mr. Mayor, council, citizens, I make a motion to introduce a calendar resolution concerning license agreement for a sign at 669 Revolution Street.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Ringstager. It's seconded by Councilmember Robertson. This is a resolution concerning a license agreement at 669 Revolution Street. And this is for the introduction of the resolution, the introduction. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Calendar resolution concerning license agreement for 669 Revolution Street. The introduction carries six here in affirmative. Council, this will be Resolution 2021-05, 2021-05. I will read the header and to the record. A resolution by the mayor and city council of the city of Havity Grace, Maryland pursuant to section 33 and 34 of the city charter and the local government article of the Annotated Code of Maryland authorized the mayor to enter into a license for construction and installation of a freestanding sign on the city right-of-way at 669 Revolution Street. Council, I have a motion to adopt.
Still move?
Second.
Want to have a tie on that one? I heard it from both directions. I have a motion by Council President, seconded by Councilmember Zinner.
I seconded.
Oh, you seconded. Okay, sorry. Oh, you seconded, okay, sorry about that. Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Ringsager. Okay, questions or comments? Councilmember Ringsager.
Mr. Mayor, council, this is for a license agreement to put a sign in the city right-of-way at South Adams and Revolution on the corner of Dr. Lee's office. It is an electrified sign that meets all the requirements of our sign code, standard boilerplate language, fifty-dollar administrative fee, gives the five-year term to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, per our previous agreements when lease agreements expire. And I have no objection to this at all. Everything seems to be pretty standard, sir. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Ringsager. Any other questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Boyer.
So I recognize the owner's need for this and that it meets all the requirements. I just want to say out loud that I'm saddened that it doesn't do anything to add to the look of the area. It's a very basic sign. It does what it needs to do, it says his name, I get that completely, but it's just, it's another missed opportunity. Revolution is one of those areas where a lot of people come into our town and we need to do a little bit more to pick it up and it's just a missed opportunity to do something just a little bit more to make that area look better. It's a basic sign, I don't find anything wrong with it, I'm not going to object to it, I'm just sad that it's a missed opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyer. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jimmy and Shane brought this before Planning Committee and, you know, it's very straightforward. It meets all of the requirements and Planning and DPW had no objections, so I'm in favor.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Any other questions or comments? With no further questions or comments, I'm going to call a roll call vote on this resolution, council. We'll start with Councilmember Zinner. Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Ringsager.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Council President Glenn.
Yes.
By a roll call vote of six-zero in the affirmative, Council Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero five, a calendar resolution concerning license agreement for six-six-nine Revolution Street is adopted and approved. Thank you. Item thirteen, ordinances, there are no ordinances this evening. Item thirteen A was removed by council at the beginning of the meeting. So we'll go to item fourteen, this evening, old business, there is no old business to attend to this evening. Item fifteen would be new business and we've got some new business. And we have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine, okay, we have three budget amendments and a slew of special events that we're going to be addressing this evening. So we're going to start off with Budget Amendment A, which is going to be Budget Amendment two thousand twenty-one dash ten, and it's going to be concerning the Ernest Burke statue. Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, I move to adopt Budget Amendment twenty twenty-one dash ten.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Robertson, seconded by Councilmember Martin. Question or comments on the Budget Amendment? Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen in the audience and at home, just for your awareness, this is the city's contribution, promised contribution and matching funds to the Ernest Burke Foundation. For those not aware, Ernest Burke was a member of the Negro League from Havertie Grace and the foundation is setting up a statue to be placed in his honor. And the good news is that we should be seeing that this spring. The cast is currently at the foundry and the groundbreaking will be scheduled sometime in April. So, very much looking forward to that, recognizing a Havertie Grace boy. The funding for this will come from higher than expected real property taxes, so it's money that hasn't been dedicated to a specific purpose yet. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Councilmember Martin.
Yes, I want to thank the city, the administration and the council. This is one of the first projects and one of the first things when I was elected, when I was approached by Kamai Murphy about these type of recognition of past history and the placement of statues, so well deserved that honor our history, but also comply with our arts and entertainment as well. It's so nice to see statues of historical figures going up in town, recognizing our history. Example in front of you now in the Ernest Burke will be another example of the city of Havertie Grace recognizing its past and bringing it to everyone's attention that we are a historical city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Any other questions or comments? Okay, council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Budget Amendment two thousand twenty-one dash ten is approved by this council. And Councilmember Robertson, would you be kind enough to read the account numbers from the where, to the how, to the what, to the when?
Yeah, sure. In the from column, account number zero-one dash zero-zero-zero-one dash four-one dash zero-one, real property taxes, ten thousand dollars. In the to column, account number zero-one dash two-three-three-two dash six-two-five-three, Community Projects Havertie Grace Ernest Burke.
Ten thousand dollars.
Excellent. Councilmember Robertson, thank you very much. Mr. DeHordy, are all the numbers checked out? Thank you very much, Mr. DeHordy. We're going to go to item B, Budget Amendment two thousand twenty-one dash eleven, TASER Replacement Program. Councilmember Robertson.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, I move to approve Budget Amendment twenty twenty-one dash one-one.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Robertson, seconded by Council President. Questions or comments on the Budget Amendment? I'll start with Councilmember Robertson, I'll come back to Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, ladies and gentlemen here and at home, just for some background, so the Police Department had planned to start replacing their existing TASER cartridges next fiscal year because they, they will have exceeded their useful life. However, because of a decrease in total projected spending for police services and all other personnel costs, so basically offset of salary and overtime savings because the city didn't do a lot of events this past year, there was some savings in the police budget. So, the city's asking that we use some of that savings to go ahead and start ordering the equipment ahead of next fiscal year.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, citizens. This is also in line, the purchase of these new tasers with the less lethal enforcement and use of force. So it will help deter, it's a, it's a new tool, it'll be a better tool, and there'll be additional training for our police officers and escalation because of the use of a new TASER and what it's really allowed to be used for. So, again, it meets all the current criteria that we're looking at down in Annapolis for less lethal means of enforcement and it's nice to see the Police Department moving forward in those efforts.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Councilmembers enter.
Yes, I would just like to point out one other thing that came up at the budget meeting is that if we move the order to this fiscal year, we can get a seven percent discount off the cost, so that reduces the price somewhat and we start with our incremental purchases a year sooner.
Thank you, Councilmembers enter. Any other questions or comments?
Do we get to play with the outdated ones?
I'll tell you what, if you vote no on this Budget Amendment, you get to be the first test subject.
I'll fully admit, I'll let them taze me, I mean, that's fine, we'll set it up, let me know.
I'm just worried about criminals out there knowing that our tasers are approaching their useful life.
Hey, well, that's how we're getting new ones tonight.
That's right, we're buying brand new ones, immediately.
Joke's on you.
Hopefully, if it passes, so, all right. Criminals probably don't watch council meetings anyway, so I'm just...
Probably not. And they're going to watch it tomorrow anyways.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Ringsager. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Budget Amendment two thousand twenty-one dash eleven, it's approved by council, six-zero in affirmative. We have one more Budget Amendment and that's going to be Budget Amendment two thousand twenty-one dash twelve involving Critical Area. And Councilmember Robertson.
Mr. Mayor, you want me to read those account numbers first?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, please, go ahead on the TASER transfer. Yes, go ahead.
Sure. In the from column, zero-one dash one-one-one-two dash five-zero-zero-four, PD SO salaries, overtime, twenty thousand five hundred dollars. In the to column, zero-one dash one-one-one-two dash six-one-three-seven, supplies and materials, tasers, twenty thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Mr. DeHordy, are the numbers correct? Thank you very much, Mr. DeHordy. Okay, we will go to item C, Councilmember Robertson, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fellow council members, I move to approve Budget Amendment twenty twenty-one dash one-two.
I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson, seconded by Councilmember Zinner. This is for Budget Amendment twenty twenty-one dash twelve, questions or comments? Okay, council, if you'll indulge me, I know some council members had some questions about this budget transfer and so I'd like to call forward Ms. Stephanie Noe, who works for the City Havertie Grace in the department that is necessarily to describe this. Ms. Noe, thank you very much for being here this evening to give the public a little, shed some light on exactly what this Budget Amendment's all about.
It's my pleasure, Mayor, and good evening. Council President, all council members, thank you for having me before you once again. This one is a little bit easier and less complicated to understand. What you're looking at is part of our project in the Critical Area. All the shoreline in Havertie Grace is designated Critical Area and therefore we have certain parameters we have to meet always with projects and any work that we perform there. So, this time we're talking a little bit about vegetation management and we're also talking a little bit about design. So this next slide you're familiar with is our Concord Point Stormwater Management. And on the right-hand top corner, you can see all three phases of that project. What's important here is to maximize the native plantings, to maximize the ecosystem, to get the most wildlife back and be the most beneficial for water quality treatments. And of course, we talked about invasives before, I mean, native plants before. And we always want to, and we're responsible for minimizing any adverse impacts to those plantings and to water quality. So, we are beholden by many measures. This is another picture of a, a practice that we put in. We've been busy the last few years. And the important part not only is to construct these projects, but to maintain them. And that means maintenance, keeping the invasive plants out, keeping the weeds out, as well as maintaining... The native plants don't require as much maintenance as normal plants do, but they, because they are, they evolved from our region, our soils, they're used to our climates and that's why we choose them. They have longer, larger, healthier root systems and they'll uptake more nutrients that way. And also, if you, you may have never looked at these plants like this before, but they're our defense against the invasive pests that come with the invasive plants. So our best defense is plant natives. And they just require less maintenance, but still, this slide is a few of the native plants that you're accustomed to seeing in our projects along the shoreline and upland too. But Critical Area is along the shoreline and that's what we're talking about use tonight. And we have the responsibility to maintain these projects once we construct them. And part of the fund transfer, the Budget Amendment tonight is for maintenance. It requires a lot of maintenance to keep the invasives out, not so much to keep the natives healthy, but you do have instances where they get damaged and destroyed. But, okay, the other half of the Budget Amendment is talking about design for some of the areas in the Critical Area. Now this, you may not recognize, but it's actually beside the Lakekeeper's House. And so, the next slide shows what a design would look like for that. So that's what we're paying for out of this Budget Amendment would be the design, not constructing the project, but designing it so that it can be constructed later on. Also for maintenance, we do involve a lot of our volunteers and this is another design we're asking for at Veterans Park. There's special amendments, amended soils there and it just needs a little, pick-me-up, a little more attractive planting. Not that those plantings are bad, some of the trees are leaning a little bit and need a little replacement, a little love and attention. So we're having a plan designed for that. This picture is at the foot of Pennington Avenue. It's city property and we want it represented as such, so we'd like to design a little something, not a lot, to get that attractive and useful and not be a grounds for anything but native plants. The next one is the city property at the foot of Green Street. And again, we're going to use the funds toward design. The next one is a great area that we removed invasives last year, although when you say you remove invasives, we knocked them down. There's still root matting's there, so we need a design for not only planting for this one, but we need a design for the attack on the root mats that are leftover because it was very, very overgrown. And we've removed that, we see a lot more people using this trail now that we kind of cleared it up a little bit. The trail system that we put in is all natural, it's called grass protective matting. We put a little pedestrian bridge over the last lock and it all leads around from the parking lot, around the pond, down the shoreline and also to the elevated walkway at the Joe K Trail. So, that's basically it. And what we're asking for is it's our money from the Special Taxing District and we're asking for a portion of it to be transferred to cover... asking for a portion of it to be transferred to cover design of these projects that you've seen. There's one other one, um, that I didn't have a, a picture for, and that's the splash area at the Yacht Basin. And as you're going into the Yacht Basin, you're entering it, it's on the left hand, your left, as you're driving in. And it's kind of beside the condos over on that side and down. It, we had the first outfall, and I know the, uh, invasives, they've been fighting there, pretty well clear in our portion, so we need a design to plant that back and also handle the outfall water. So it's called a splash area for that reason. And, um, we're just excited about these projects, and what we'll do for the construction is, um, go ahead and, uh, go after grant money that we can use, and then also, um, in the future, we could, we can use the critical area funds for these kind of projects that we do in the critical area.
Thank you, Ms. Noy. Councilmember Martin, question?
No, no questions, statement.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, citizens, along with what you see tonight, down in Annapolis, both the Senate and the House are working on legislation for the environment, and part of it does include the, um, getting rid of invasive and going to, um, natural plant growth, native plant growth in the area. There is going to be funding with that, and Stephanie can attest to this, once you have skin in the game, they're more willing to grant, give us grants. So there's legislation in Annapolis right now for these type of projects. Um, I'm not sure where it's at, I have to finish researching that, but it's down there now. Um, they're working on a lot of things, police reform, Kerwin and those, but the environment is also big on their list, and the water, especially the bay, and we are the top of the bay, we should be able to help get grants because of these type of projects. So I'd be in support of this amendment.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Any comments, uh, Councilmember Robertson?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak a little bit about the Budget Amendment. Um, so first of all, thank you, Stephanie, for, uh, giving us that detailed presentation. The, uh, for, for folks' awareness, if you live within what's, um, considered the critical area in Havertide Grace, I do, uh, just barely, but I think it's like a thousand feet off the shore, um, you're subject to a special taxing district, so there's money that comes out of my property tax that, uh, well, it's an additional tax, but, um, it's assigned by my property tax that goes, uh, into this pot, uh, to specifically be used for these critical area restoration projects. Um, and, you know, the bulk of this is directly for, uh, shore buffer management. The, um, types of project that Stephanie's describing here are very much in line with what's currently being done, uh, with the living shoreline, and if you're not familiar with that, that's a project to basically use plants, um, as a, a buffer to soak up all the bad stuff before it hits the river and hits the bay, uh, and pollutes our waterway. And I believe that once Ms. Noy is finished with her project, Maryland, uh, Havertide Grace will be the only municipality in Maryland that is able to meet the MDE and EPA requirements, um, meaning that all of the, all of the stormwater that runs into the bay and into the river will be as clean as it can get. Uh, and as an aside, I'd like to echo Councilmember, um, Martin's comments as well, that, uh, the, the bulk of the actual work itself will likely be grant funded. I wish that I were keeping track, I'm, I'm pretty certain that, um, Stephanie's got us about a thousand, a thousand to one ratio, uh, with, with grant funding so far, especially after the living shoreline project is finished. So I, I have no doubt, um, that moving forward, uh, we, we shouldn't be seeing any, not much, uh, in, in terms of city funding going to this. But again, I just wanna remind folks at home that this, uh, this funding source is a specific purpose fund. It's only for, um, these types of projects and, and for stormwater remediation, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Councilmember Boyer.
I just wanna say, again, kudos, wonderful foresight, looking forward, looking for the places that need to be fixed. Um, and thank you very much for doing this presentation to help us all recognize and look around our area and see places that we could, that need just a little bit of fixing, and I'll really look forward to what you, um, offer. I know in the past, and maybe as our world opens up, maybe you can do just a couple of, um, of, like, tours or just getting the information out, using the green team maybe, just to educate people who live within the critical area of plantings and other things that we can do to help, um, help pay it forward for our kids, so, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilmembers, enter. Thank you, Councilmember Boyer.
Thank you very much. But the other thing I wanted to point out, that there is a process to this, and you can't just take that money even though we have it, we have to get, so the projects have to be approved in the Jay Merlin Critical Area, and once we get that letter of improvement, then we can, so, um, I wanna thank Diane for, um, representing to Stephanie for bringing such wonderful work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers, enter. Any other questions, uh, for Ms. Noy? Stephanie, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I know we're under the question originally, but, uh, I, I did wanna ask Ms. Noy to come up and give a little bit of insight, I mean, for the public's benefit as well. Any other questions about this project or budget transfer? Okay, Council, we're under the question, and it was originally, hold on, sorry. Sec, it was motioned by.